Okay. We will open the meeting on April 21st at 7:07. Do I have a motion?
So motion.
Second it.
Second.
Okay, Wally. You gotta say aye, we gotta go through.
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
And Jim's, you can't get Jim on audio, right Rebecca?
Yeah, I think he's been trying to come, but I don't know if he's gonna be able to. So we might wanna leave him out until we see him come on.
No problem, okay. Alright, all set. Hey, we open a public hearing. Due to the declaration of emergency, will be continued and approved for preliminary subdivision plan for the 10th residence lots. I'm sorry, for 106, I mean, skip what, 106 King Street Metal Drive Development. CEO Karen Kenneth Cometh, applicant is requesting approval for a preliminary subdivision plan for 10 lot resident lots.
Mr. Chairman, if I may interrupt, can I please read something into the record in regards to the governor's declaration of emergency?
Yes, and I, I'm sorry, you were supposed to do that before I even started, so yes.
Thank you. So this open meeting of the Groveland Planning Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings in accordance with Governor's orders to reduce requirements of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a public excessively physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. For this meeting, the Groveland Planning Board is convening by video conference via Zoom as potion of how the public may join. All supporting materials are available on the town's website.
Okay. So do I have a motion?
Motion to continue.
What's pardon?
Was that a motion to continue?
Yeah, motion to continue for 6 King Street.
So motion.
Public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Wally?
Aye. Alright, Wally?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
Okay. Second is the Groveland zoning reconfiguration of town meeting warrant article to consider proposed amendment to Groveland zoning bylaws. We have a motion to open the public hearing for addition of zoning bylaws.
Are we gonna continue after?
Yeah.
Yes.
Motion open.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Wally?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
Okay. We'd like to continue with this to, Rebecca, it was the March?
The next meeting would be May 5th.
I'm sorry, May 5th, right?
That is correct.
Do I have a motion to continue this meeting to May 5th?
So motion, Wally?
Second.
Brad?
Brad, okay. Good. So, okay, so the third would be two Groveland subdivision rules and reg reconfiguration to consider opposed amendment to Groveland subdivision rules and regs. They have opened, they hear it. Open the public hearing for their condition.
So motion.
Second.
Brad?
Wally?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to continue the hearing into May 5th?
So motion.
Second.
Names?
Brad.
Wally? Okay. Thank you. Okay, Oak Valley Development, Jay Ogden. Matt Lot 4 37 Wood Street and 3 50 Center Street. Need to establish a fee of 50 or or 550. Decision and proposed vote.
Fly a motion, it's, I just had a question on this, from what I can see on the plan, it's, it's an A and R lot, is it not?
It, I was considering a lot line adjustment because we're not creating a new lot, we're adding, we're shifting about eight acres from one existing lot to another existing lot.
Are both lots building lots?
One.
Eight acres is a lot, a land.
Yes, 352 Center Street, or 350 Center Street, I think it is, is the Subash Family Farm.
Yeah.
So there is an existing dwelling on that. I don't think they have adequate frontage without some wetlands areas to subdivide it further. So we're conveying the property to them to expand their farm.
And what's on? What's on the other parcel at the moment?
The other parcel is, has frontage on Wood Street. So the remaining, I forget if it's 30, 30 acres or so is actually vacant at this time.
And does it have adequate frontage on Wood Street?
I believe it has about 400 feet of street frontage on Wood Street.
So that's, that's a lot of land.
400. Looks like 172.
So we got a lot, we're creating a lot and we have a lot line adjustment on the other, so I, I think the fee is, is what was proposed at side history, and that's, seems pretty nominal.
So I'm not creating a new a new lot that has any street frontage?
It's eight acres, though. That's, that's, it's not like, the, the lot line adjustment fee is, you know, for moving a line, you know, 500 square feet, 1,000 square feet, that sort of thing, it happens all the time when people get their land surveyed and they have to swap around, that's why we incorporated that $50 fee, but eight acres in creating a whole new parcel, I, I think Rebecca had that be correct. You know, and plus we have 450 feet of frontage and how many acres on the other?
I'm trying to read it. 22 or so?
Yeah, so that's, that's a big parcel, so what's the intent of, of both of that, 38 and and the 22 is for what?
Well, if you take a look at the plan, you'll notice that this, the eight acres for the Subash parcel is somewhat segregated from the rest of the property with a good amount of wetlands.
Yeah, yeah, that doesn't matter.
Still part of the land.
Yes.
I'm not disputing that the, the wetlands different, I'm just saying that this is a natural division which caused, which suggested where the lot line could get moved to.
Yeah, that's, that's crystal ball work at the moment, because anything could happen, so, so what's before us, it's just, it's just the 22 acres and the eight acres with a five, with a 550 fee and that's it, right?
The, well. Yeah, that's the
That's the intent for right now, but you have something up your sleeve to do.
That's the plan that is in front of you right now.
Yeah, and then you have something different coming up.
Yeah, this, this is a larger parcel that was been roughly about 40 acres in the past.
Yeah.
Times to discuss with you guys.
Yeah. So I'm just trying to nail down what this is, I, I like the future planning aspect, but for, for time of the board at the moment, the only thing before us is, is the lot line and the lot, and I, and I think the fee is proper, so was there anything else associated with tonight's filing with the A and R?
No, I'm just, I'm confused by your procedure of charging $550 to not create a new lot, but to to move property line, to, to shift land between one existing lot and another existing lot. We did a very similar thing at 21 Wood Street, where we
How many acres?
We added four and a half to five acres to an existing 30,000 square foot lot out of the same parcel.
Yeah, that, I, I think the fee is, is pretty nominal for what you're doing, and if you're coming in with something else, we can have a, another chat about that maybe later at the pleasure of the rest of the board, but I'll, I'll fly a motion to endorse the A and R, I don't know how we're gonna do that, though. For the 550 fee, and we can revisit this later with, if it's something important we missed.
So I can understand this a little bit better? Can I ask, you're saying that a $50 fee to move eight acres of land is too insignificant, so it should be a larger fee, so.
No, I don't think he said that, Jay, I think what he said is, because you're moving the lot line, you're creating another lot. So you're moving a line, and that's the fee, I guess, for moving the line, am I correct, Wally? And when you move that line, that now you've created another A and R lot. I, I went through this, and I remember, and I remember on my property, and I think the fee, Jay, back then was a thousand dollars.
Yeah, depends on the land, yeah.
And I had a 40,000 square foot acre, and I did the same thing as you. I cut out from the 30,000 parcel and made that more, you know, to conform with the bylaws, so I had two conforming lots, and when I did that, they were both two different lots, we, because we moved the lot line, we created a new lot. And I think that's what Wally's stating with this one, in a, in a lot line adjustment, I can see that.
Yeah, in the past, it's always been explained to me that the $500 fee goes towards the bureaucracy of having to create and establish a new accounting account basically for a new lot, and to redraw these tax maps and assign new map and lot numbers to the new lot, but I'm not creating a new lot, it's being absorbed into an existing lot.
I, I think you might be a little, little confused with that definition maybe by another town, because all of our fees just go into the general, the general fund on that.
Saying that, that's how it's been justified in the past.
I wrote that law, and I don't, I don't ever remember saying that in 27 years, and, but, but it's right, in certain instances, the fee's more, so I got a motion on the table to fly for 550 just to go with this, and Jay, if you wanna revisit it when we get together and see what else you got planned, because it's, it's kinda hard to see this, even with the one in front of me printed and on the screen, so, but to move you forward.
Second it.
Okay, so.
Can I ask one more question, just so I can try to understand this a little bit better?
After the vote. Procedural wise, we get a motion on the floor.
Yep. Brad?
Yeah, so motion.
Okay, so we will it will be $550 to do his lot line adjustment, or add another A and R lot?
Both, yeah, A and R plus lot line, yeah.
And lot line. Wally?
Aye.
Brad?
Uh, yep.
And Bob?
Aye.
So, all in amit, it's all voted.
Okay.
Can I ask my question now?
Yeah, good.
So if it's a $500 fee to create a new lot, and I'm, by your, your explanation, creating a new lot, what line am I adjusting? Why is it a 550 fee? I'm just looking for some consistency in the fees that I've been charged in the past, and the fees that I will be charged in the future, so that I can understand.
It's, it's in the, Jay, do you have a copy of the subdivision control law?
I do.
I, I think there's a, I thought there was a fee page in the back of that, that is, is pretty clear.
Okay.
I think, I mean, I mean, it's pretty, pretty basic, but it's, I hear what you're saying, and, and I'm not trying to blow up your question, but you, you applied for this, and I'm not sure, Rebecca, what was the timestamp on this?
The timestamp for the application was on April 6, 2020.
Alright, so, okay, so we're right there anyway.
Note that the Governor's Executive Order suspends all of the time requirements in order for the Planning Board and other boards and commissions to act based upon the COVID-19 virus.
Alright, so the 21 day, the 21 day doesn't apply, but we got it anyway, just the endorsement's gonna be, uh, you know, we're gonna have to do that at some point, but but Jay, that's, that's pretty much the fee, it's, it's been there for a long time.
I appreciate you taking the time to, to discuss this and hear it, I'm just looking to, to learn something as well, that's all.
Yeah.
So it's good to learn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Um, Bob, carry on?
Yep. Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may interject, so in terms of the procedure and moving forward, I'm not too sure how we would be able to endorse the actual plan for the Form A and lot line adjustment. I was thinking that potentially the police station is still open for public access, and whether or not it made any sense to provide the MyLars at that particular office, along with the A, Form A and Form A1, and have the board at their leisure be able to drop in and sign that if the board members felt comfortable doing so. However, otherwise, I wasn't too sure with Town Hall being closed, how we would actually get the plan, the forms themselves physically endorsed, so that Mr. Ogden could afford them at the registry.
You know that, I, I know the courts, the courts are closed, but don't, I do not know if the registry is.
The registry is, is operational.
Okay, so what's your timeline, Jay, on this, what, what's? What's your plan at this point?
I'd like to get it wrapped up in February.
Okay, so, I mean, um, so, so if we go to May on the A and R signing, that's not gonna be a problem for you?
I mean, at this point, I, I guess, your meeting's gonna be May 5th.
Yeah, so far, yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, alright, because that, that's.
My, my concern is that it, I mean, there my concern is that if your May 5th meeting doesn't physically happen, I'd like these people to be able to proceed with their
Yeah.
farming operation.
I, I hear that, so, I, I don't think anybody's gonna hold up farming anyway, but I, I understand, it's, at this point, it's a paper, a paper recording. You know, if you're giving them access to the land and you're the landowner.
Well, I'm certainly not giving them access to, to clear or cut anything until they own the property. I don't want that.
Yeah, well, I get that, that's between, that's between you guys, the parties, but as far as the board goes, I, I don't, I don't see a problem, Rebecca had a good suggestion, if we can't hold a meeting May 5, we'll go to Plan B.
Yeah, I, I'm for that.
Thank you.
Okay. Right.
So we will need a formal vote to approve the Form A if we may.
Okay, so motion on, oh, you, you mean to sign it out, or to?
Just the approval, you had
So, so motion to approve the A and R plan of A and B before us.
Second, Brad?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Wally.
Brad?
Bob? Okay, everything all set on this, then?
Okay.
Moving on?
Yeah.
Okay. Benjamin Street Extension to Hool Home, discuss construction, monitoring and report data, April 2nd and then 20. I'm gonna have to excuse myself. Brad or Wally?
Wally. Thanks. So on this one here, is this Bill Holt's report on Benjamin Street that we're looking at with the benchmarks?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is, alright, so we can't hold a vote on anything here, are we just accepting in the letter, Rebecca, or?
I'm not sure exactly what the board would like to do at this current point in time. Cease and desist was issued on the project based upon discrepancies that were presented between the plan and what was taking place out on the field. I know that Ellison with TEC is also on the call this evening, and he has just actually submitted a comment letter to the original, or excuse me, to the update that Mr. Holt had provided in terms of the new design, if you will, with the retaining wall and the elevation changes. So I'm sure if the board would like to hear from Pete in terms of his monitoring report, and specifically how things were being out in the field, and then whether or not Mr. Holt would like to weigh in in terms of what he's presented, so we can get some clarification on the matter, and then from that point, move forward in terms of whether or not the board felt as though a major modification was necessary to the approved subdivision plan, or whether or not we could continue to discuss this as an insubstantial change. But I thought it might be worthwhile in, in efforts to kind of progress this forward for everyone's sake, to hear a little bit more about what happened and, and where we are today.
Alright, I'm in favor of of, of hearing the, the TC report to get us where we are. Procedural wise, we, we can't hold a vote without a, without a full quorum, where to go, other than yeah, we really can't hold anything. Even kicking it over to May, but we can have a an update presented, but we can't take any action. But it would update the rest of us as to how things have progressed, like you said.
Rebecca, you weren't able to get Jim on the screen?
I can reach out to again, him again, and see whether or not I can get him on, if you wanna pause for a minute or so.
Alright, with that, Wally, at least we'll have a call.
Yeah, yeah, because the only, well, the procedure would be to get, because we just got the TE, TC just got the report, they had a quick job turning it, by the way, and they turn it over to Bill, and Bill's gonna go back and forth, and then we're gonna have to see what these proposed changes are, etc., to go forward to decide whether it's a, you know, minor change, a Scribner modification, or such, and with that, we just need voting power of the board, I'm all for hearing as to what the plan is for the engineer and the review engineers to what they've uncovered. We just can't take any action other than that, without another member.
If we get Jim involved, I think we don't have to do this twice, I think we could just do it once and then make our decisions based on what the findings are here.
Yeah, and that's if we can, without a plan, you know, going through what, what a change, but why don't we try to get, try to get Jim, Rebecca, and if not, we'll just have TEC, you know, pitch the board, and then, and then Bill come back with something a little bit later.
Agreed, I'll continue to give him a call on his phone, and I would also agree with you in terms of moving forward, but my goal really is to make sure that, again, the information is discussed in a timely manner, and that the board is able to give the developer some point of direction, while it may not be in the full visible direction as to how they like the applicant to move forward, or the, excuse me, the developer.
I agree. Bob, do we have any minutes to approve or invoices while we're written?
Uh, yeah, we do, I'm sorry, yeah, we could do that. We got some invoices. Oh, we got some minutes to, how about, we'll do approve February 4th, 2020 minutes from FYI Agenda incorrectly states January 7th, but do I have a motion to approve?
So motion.
Oh, Wally.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Brad?
And then approve March 18th, 2020 minutes.
So motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then we have invoices for outstanding. So, TEC 106 King Street for $1,783. TEC for 38 Benjamin Street for $960.51. And TEC for 301 Main Street, $503. Do I have a?
So motion.
Second.
Sorry, Brad, second it, yeah, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Brad?
Yep.
I was able to make communication with Jim, and he is trying to log on as we speak.
Okay. Alright, are those the other two things there, Bob? Just the minutes?
Yeah, that's, um
Okay.
Yep, so we'll just have to hang on for a few minutes and see if we Bill, you look relaxed. He's not talking. We got there. Hey.
Welcome aboard.
Hey, can you hear us? Not quite. There it is. Jim, can you hear us?
I'm good, thank you, I'm right here.
Okay, so, well, he's taken over this for Benjamin Street, so.
Okay, thank you, so, I'm gonna let TC go ahead and brief the board on its discovery, the report that went out, and the counter report, and, and now the, the secondary out there, so why don't you go ahead and take it away?
Your thing, Peter Ellison from TEC, the peer reviewer for the, for the planning board. This started on April 2nd. Rebecca got a call from the, about her, Nancy Sweetser, about her directly on Benjamin Street Extension. And she had stated she thought that the road was being built too high in, in relation to her land. So I went out there to take a look at everything and kind of document what was going on to see if I could see any discrepancies. On that visit, April 2nd, I noticed a pretty, a somewhat significant side slope on the side of the road that is not shown on the approved plans. This is down kind of near the corner of Benjamin Street Extension and, and Park Street. So basically, I, I wrote that in my report and issued that to Rebecca. And that's when the, the cease and desist order started, was sent out to, to the owner. Since that time, Bill Holt, the owner's surveyor, has gone out and, and done some additional surveying and review of what's been built. And he issued a report that I'm sure the board has a copy of.
Yeah.
So, he submitted that to the board, or at least I got a copy of it yesterday afternoon, and I was able to review that that report and the plan in relation to what was approved by the board, and I've, I've kind of gone through in a preliminary manner and, and noted any differences between the two plans. So I'll just run through those real quick. First, they noted that the roadway was being built to, two to two and a half feet higher. First, they noted that the roadway was being built two, two to two and a half feet higher than what was on the approved plan. This is, this was likely an issue with the contractors' construction layout equipment. So that was the first thing that they noted in the report. Then they also, you know, the revised plan that they provided has adjusted existing topography. So there were changes to the base mapping topography as well as changes to the proposed grades on the roadway. In the worst areas, the existing topography changed by up to six feet. This is down in the area by the Park Street Extension or the Park Street kind of turnaround. Where the existing grade was previously shown as elevation 86 and now it's been updated to elevation 80. The new proposed plan shows a retaining wall that's about 75 feet in length. The maximum height of that wall is three feet. It stretches, it's about 75 feet long from Station 1 plus 75 to 2 plus 50. And they've added a wooden guardrail at the top of that. So there's a, there's a, in some areas, a three-foot grade separation between Benjamin Street and the Sweetser property.
Wow, and with the guardrail on top makes it, how tall?
Well, guardrails probably, what, 30 inches? So you're looking five, six feet higher than her land.
That's, that's pretty high. Okay, carry on.
And in their response letter, they're stating that they've provided two access points to the Sweetser property so that she can still get access to either Park Street or Benjamin Street. But based on my review, I only saw one location on Park Street. Although it does look like, based on the grading, they would be able to provide an additional access point by the Sweetser garage, kind of like behind her garage. It looks like that would be pretty simple to add to the plan. I think the, the most concerning part of my review is that there's, there's a new iron rod that's called out at the property corner. It's called out to be set. And I think that this indicates that there's somewhat of a question of where the property line is. And the work that's been done, I think there's a question of whether that work was done beyond the property line of Sweetser. I can't tell you that for sure because I'm not a surveyor, but maybe, maybe once I'm done, Bill can, Bill Holt can respond to that part.
How many feet are we talking?
I couldn't tell, except based on the plan, it looked like several feet between the original iron rod and the one that's to be set.
I'm sorry, Wally.
Yeah, just several feet, like 20 or several feet, like three or four?
Um, might be able to, I'm not sure. Bill, can you, yeah, can you answer that, Bill?
I believe it's about six feet difference. You can see the iron rod on the plan we found. It's actually on the back line, but it's not at the corner.
Yeah.
Now, we did stake out the center line based on our plan, so the center line was actually correct where it was located. I think when Dafco, I think it was the contractor, when he was doing the grading, he saw the iron rod and thought it was on the corner. So he did go over about, I think it's like two or three feet, the base of the grading. He made it very steep. He made it like a two to one or more. So he didn't go too far out, but it is, I took shots on the base of the total slope of the fill. And it's approximately two feet, but the proposal is obviously to pull that back and get it on, get all the, all the grading on the property, off the property, off the Sweetser property.
So I got a couple of questions. So Pete, how long was that, kind of like that two foot or two to six foot screw up? And how many feet is it? Like 10 feet? Is it 100 feet? Is it 200 feet?
I think it's probably consistent with the length of the proposed retaining wall, the way that it's shown now. So it's probably close to 75 feet in length.
But that's not a small, it's not a smaller.
No, we, we actually tried, we tried to figure out what went wrong. We think we either had a bad shot on some of the grades and just didn't realize it. Until Danforth started, not Danforth, I'm sorry, Dafco started building the roadway. Unfortunately, he didn't give me a call. I wasn't hired to do the, I wasn't hired to go out and do the grades for him. He did his grades himself and I need to be able to be out there to see it and I wasn't. So he continued on even though it was obviously not correct. So we took shots, I went back out, did some more shots, and this is the actual grading that is actually out there. And we were able to rework this grading to make it work with a wall. Also, we lowered the grading on, on the spur road on Park Street to make it, it's a two-foot fill at the end now. And we can certainly get a grade down to the proposed driveway on Park Street to the Sweetser property.
And how was she handling it? So when, when this is all said and done, it's going to go back to the original plan? Are we going to pull the grade back?
Yeah, the grade will come back so that her grade will be, will stay the same at the property line. Won't be filling over the line. And that's why we need the wall. We need the wall because it's about a three-foot difference in the proposed grades. Also, if you can see on the plan, I shifted the road about four feet to the left inside the right of way to kind of give a little more room to do the grading and keep it further away. And that happens after the two driveways. The driveway for 36, the existing driveway shown with 36 Benjamin, which is a new house that they built. And then her garage, there's a dentions right across from that. I see that I didn't leave a curb opening, but I can definitely leave a curb opening there. We'll definitely not put curbing across her driveway and they can revise that to show that.
So Pete, is there a construction waiver because of the, to the abutter that needs to be signed off on for them to work that close?
Um, probably they need some kind of agreement in place for them to, so they're, they're, they're cease and desisted right now. So the, the work that's been done over the property line is going to remain that way until the board authorizes them to fix it. And, and probably what needs to happen is some type of agreement between Dahulu and Sweetser. And, and come to a resolution on how this is going to look and, you know, restoring her land back to the way it originally was.
I agree with that. I mean, I think may, I don't know if we were in, in the original plan, if there was a construction waiver. Because it was working so close and I didn't realize there was a wall going in there, so I don't remember. Rebecca, was there on that original draft, was there, you know, supposed to be a construction sign off agreement between the two bodies?
There was nothing of that nature. And if I may speak and let the board know that I have been in direct communication with the abutter. She does not have access to a computer, otherwise she would be participating on this call. She has specifically stated that she does not intend to prohibit the landowner from proceeding with their project. However, she just has some general concerns as the abutting property owner, such as access to the road and the visual impact as well. I mean, if the road, I guess her concern is that the road sits higher and now you're talking about a retaining wall and a, and a guardrail on top of it, how that really affects her as a homeowner. So again, she's been very understanding of, you know, wanting the developer to do what they want to do and the understanding of, of the process, but making sure that the process is safe. Has expressed some concern based upon the new design and the visual impact that it would have. And she has stated that she's not opposed to working with the developer in terms of an agreement of such, as long as they can come to an understanding where it would not prohibit or impact her quality of life.
My feeling is, is while right now there's a cease and desist order in play, I think what they should do is try to right the wrong and make everybody happy.
Wally, this is John Paulson from Atlantic Engineering.
Yeah.
How you doing? I haven't talked to you for a long time.
I know.
Nancy hired us last week to come out and survey her property because she thought things were, were over the lot line. We're in the process of doing that.
Yeah.
And I was talking to her this evening and I didn't realize there was a meeting tonight. I told her I'd log on and, and see what was going on with it and stuff like that. So I'd like to take and get a copy of this plan sent to me if I could so that I can fill her in a little bit. And I know that she talked to you earlier today, Rebecca, and that you'll be talking to her too. So, yeah, she was just concerned, you know, that things weren't encroaching on her property, basically, is what it came down to. So that's why we're surveying it from our end, just to, for her comfort.
Okay, so from, Peter, from the, the way this, this is coming out, we've got a substantial change. I, I agree with the, you know, everybody trying to do the right thing here. But we've got a change to a plan that has a 75-foot retaining wall that, you know, with a, with a rail on top is pretty hot. So I think although it may be brief, I, I think we should have the change submitted just to get it on the record, have all the parties in for, you know, a one-time hearing. And then have the board decide whether that's a substantial change or not. And I think we need everybody's input to, to actually figure that out. But it, it sounds like it's a big change, but we can, there's tools that the planning board can use to accept the changes into the plan without going a little bit too crazy. But it certainly is substantial enough to be heard by all parties. And John, that's great you're coming around the other side and, and working for the homeowner. I see anything here that's not workable, but I, but I think we're going to need some rules before we can find out where actually we are before the ceases released. Except for, you know, engineering, etc., to make the corrections. Does that make sense to everybody? And Peter, too?
Yeah, it makes sense to me. I just, I didn't know if you wanted to, so, so the process would be to have them come back to a meeting? And then you would determine if it's substantial or insubstantial or, or minor, I guess, would be the one.
I see, we still have to wait for the, we said Atlantic surveyor for Sweetser?
That's correct.
Access to a computer.
I'm, I'm hoping to finish this week, but the weather's not supposed to be the greatest, so it's probably going to be the beginning of next week when I finish my survey work.
So it sounds like it'll be done for the May 4th meeting. Hopefully, you know, I mean, Nancy can guess be there because she doesn't have a computer. So she's going to have to gain access or if we have to do another online meeting or be in person.
Can I just say one thing? Excuse me. I just wanted to let you know that Steve did go over with the plan, the revised plan, and showed Nancy and went through it with her. I just wanted to let you know, so she has seen it. He offered to give her that plan. She wasn't interested in that. But she did, he did go through it all with her, just so that you know, she did get a chance to see it anyway. I understand she's not at the meeting, but I just wanted to let you know that he did go over it with her.
Alright, well, thanks, Nina. But from the board's perspective, we've run across this before over the decades. You know, it happens from time to time. Bill, what I, what I didn't hear was, I understood the iron rod difference, but how did the benchmark get that far wrong?
Actually, there's a benchmark on, the benchmark's not wrong. He just didn't, he didn't use the benchmark. So it was, it was kind of an error on his part for that part of it. Obviously, the grade difference is an error on my part because we didn't pick it up until it was too late. So, but this plan works out the issues. We think satisfactorily that we'll, you know, be able to construct this road. The thing is, if she wanted to build a driveway or a roadway down to her backland, this is the way it would have to be done. There's no, no other way to do it, basically, than what we're showing. There's not enough room. It's 35 foot right of way. We actually said we moved it over about four feet to kind of get a little further away so we have a little more room to do the grading. And even then, we still need the wall, so.
Yeah, yeah, so it's a little bit more than a, than a small field change. So, so it, it's going to require the hearing one day and then get everybody in. I think your approach is reasonable. Pete's going to back that up. John's going to come in from his end for the, for the abutter. And I think we can easily get that done. I'd rather have, if it's possible, and we are time crunched even with a meeting on the 4th. To kind of have everything put together by the engineers. So all three of you get together and communicate so that when you come in on the 4th, everybody's with a thumbs up on what the proposed change is to pitch to the board. So that we have enough information, if possible, to make that vote and accept the change and decide whether it's going to be needing anything further. Other than that, obviously, it's going to be a set of drawings and, and alike, but it's a pretty substantial change. So it's, I don't think it's a big deal per se is getting it done, but it has to be done.
So, just maybe it's on. I just want to chime in on one thing. So looking at the plan, I listened to Pete and listened to Bill. So we've got a 12% grade from 50 feet to 140 feet, correct?
Yes.
So what, so what kind of a percentage of this grade are we going to go back to?
That's, that's, it's, it's 12% is what we're proposing, which was approved at the, at the original meeting is the maximum 12%. That matches the grades up top from zero, Station 0 to 150. And then we have to bring it down to the low spot. So we don't want to put any more fill than we have to, so faster we can drop it down, the better. It does, it's still less, the 12% is still less than two other parts of the roadway that are over 15%. So it's, it's, you know, and road is wider, so it's improvement, far, far better improvement than the existing roadway itself. And it's only serving one house.
If I remember correctly, it's already in excess of what we waived it. I don't, I don't have that piece of paper in front of me, but I, I don't think it was that much.
It was 12, 12% is what we, we asked for a waiver of 12% and it was granted.
I think the question is in regards to the length of that percentage grade.
Oh, correct.
Being almost 140 or so. So the extent of that percentage for that grade change is a little bit more excessive than what was originally proposed. And whether or not the board still felt as though that waiver based upon the new design actually warranted a waiver. If I'm understanding Brad's comment correctly.
That's correct.
Okay, yeah, I can take a look at that. We did make it 12% longer. I can go back and see if the original grades will work. It might be a little higher at the, at the other end if it's, if it stays the way it was originally approved. So I'll take a look at that. And I can present that to Peter and John.
We'd have to see that. Rebecca, we'd have to find what we waived it. I don't have it, I don't have the documentation. I mean, but I do remember us specifically talking about it. I don't know if you do, Wally. Remember we waived the percentage of grade, but I don't know if we waived it at that, you know, for that length.
Yeah, you know, at this point, it wouldn't matter per se for the fix because even, even a waiver that was granted then, and this is a substantial change. It's going to have to be rolled in with the new, with the new drawing and then whatever the particulars are to modify, you know, the sheet changes, etc., on the original approval. So it's nice to know information, but it's not going to make a difference in the end result, is it? Does, on, as far as the engineers go, John, Bill, Pete, you guys feel that this is something you can all perhaps get close to for the next meeting? Or do you think you need more time?
This is John. I don't need more time, but I, Nancy hasn't hired me to look at engineering stuff just to do the survey. So I'll have to talk to her and see about that because I know money is an issue for her. I was looking at the first page of the subdivision plan that's recorded and it's number 13 on it says allowable maximum sole waiver of 10% to 12% for Station 1 plus 75 to 2 plus 25.
50 feet.
That's 50.
Yeah, so we're beyond that.
50 to 14.
Yeah, so back to the question, can, do you think we can have a presentation to submit? On the 5th, and Johnny said you might need more time, should we kick it to a little bit later? Because I'd rather do this to open it and see if we can do it. Plus, do we have enough time for the advertising for a hearing? I think we're coming up on that. That's going to be a little short for time.
So we would need to, if you're going to do an official Um, so we would need to, if you're going to do an official modification in terms of legal advertisement in the, um. Uh, local Eagle, uh, Eagle commune and also send a butter notifications, then you would need to have the, the hearing posted. Or excuse me, the notice posted fourteen, uh, prior to the actual hearing. Uh, so I, I don't believe that you would be able to obviously get that done before the.
Yeah, and then that comes down to. The, is it a minor change or major change, if it's a major change, then it requires the public hearing, if it's a. If it's a minor change and the board sees it as such, based on the data presented. Um, then it can just be. Um. A meet, a public meeting of the board.
If it's just a, then I only need forty-eight hours notice, um, excluding holidays in order to get an agenda posted. Uh, with enough time to notice properly, but it's when you start talking about an actual public hearing.
Right.
The timeline a little bit closer.
Yeah, and I, and I don't know if we're gonna have enough information. To decide that this evening. Uh, unless somebody wants to just throw a dart for that, but, um, Pete, what do you, what's your take on that? I mean seventy-five feet. Routine wall height, I mean, but that checks all the boxes for a major change. But. You know, is there anything else we're not seeing that would warrant a full-blown public hearing, if we do it. Um, under the minor change?
If you were to do a minor change, are you able to incorporate, um, conditions of the, of the change? You know, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Um, that you could, um, you know, so that you can formally require that the. Area that is on Nancy Sweetzer's land that's been, uh, built on would be restored. Back to the way it was originally and, um. I'm, I'm not sure exactly right now, but we could definitely get that worked out before the next meeting. You know, I, I don't know, are you able to, to put conditions on a minor modification?
Yeah, we can, yeah, it's, it's more like a, um. Um, as, as we've done it before, it's, it's a, a larger field change. Because that happens all the time with grades and center lines and roadways and, and all of that, where, where it comes into the field. Although usually they're not a hundred and. You know, uh, seventy-five feet long rather, but, uh, you know, so that's. That's, that's a pretty good size one, but yes, you can, we can put that in on the minor change, the parties are present. Which would be directly affected.
Um, is endorsed though, that would be my one caution and my one concern to the board is that they have an endorsed subdivision plan, so.
So we have to go with the mod.
In fact, put conditions on an insubstantial change, but once we endorse the plan, it gets a little bit harder to. Uh, force the applicant to do something different than what we actually signed and approved.
Yeah, so that's where. The party, the, the party would also have to endorse the change. Um. Now, if we went ahead now. And voted it for public hearing, it, it wouldn't be by May fourth, but it would be. At the second meeting in May.
Correct.
And that would, that way we would have a known. Get it all done, get it ready. Um. We could vote it in as a major change today to go to the public hearing, and then everybody would. Instead of finding out on the fifth. That, oh, we have to go to a major change and now, and then we gotta start the process, it might be a little bit. Um. Easier at this point, and certainly time exponential, to just go ahead and vote it in as a major change and have everybody. By that second meeting in May, uh, report in for the hearing and just get it all done in. Uh, short order, and then the engineers still work together to, uh, make sure everybody's. Got all the i's dotted and t's crossed for that one hearing.
It would also, it's an opportunity to provide the updated plan to other departments so that they may weigh in as they see fit, based upon their jurisdiction and. How they would need the road to be constructed in order to access and or maintain, et cetera.
Yeah, so that. Yeah, I forgot about the highway department on that, um, because they're, that, that's probably, um. Gonna raise an eyebrow or two with the change of the plan, so. Just thinking out loud with that, I, I think for everybody's. Protection and expediency, I, I think we ought to hold the vote for the major change, get that hearing date. Uh, the engineers can get the submissions of the changes or the proposed changes for the. Um, for that public hearing, and that way everybody's ready and we don't have to extend this thing out any further. Um. And, and get it complete, does that sound reasonable to the board and the engineers and Rebecca?
I like that idea.
Okay. Jim?
I agree.
Okay.
You alright with that Rebecca?
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense, and I think that it also helps the owner of the property when they go to sell the property, so that they'll have. That's exactly what it is, they need to do, so when they're trying to sell the property and there's no issues with the deed and the title moving forward. Um, it is supposed to be remained a private roadway, so there is going to be stormwater infrastructure that's gonna be associated with that deed for that particular property on thirty-eight Benjamin. So I think that it makes it a lot cleaner, not just for, um, the town in terms of, of, of making sure that we have a clear path. But also for the owner and the developer, so that they are able to, uh, efficiently moving forward as well.
I agree. Um, okay, and, uh, Pete, does that sound good to you?
Yeah, that, that gives me plenty of time, I think. Um, so.
Okay, and, uh, Bill, does that meet your, you think you can get all that squared away?
Yeah, that makes sense, um, it's probably the best process to take at this point.
Okay, and John, does that give you enough time to brief?
Yes.
Your client, okay. Alright, so then why doesn't, uh, someone from the board float a motion? Um, to vote in for. Uh, a major change and to hold a public hearing, and what's the date of Rebecca, May what?
May fifth.
The next meeting, May fifth, however, I mean, whether or not, I mean, May fourth is when town hall is supposed to open and the, the restriction is to be lifted. Uh, whether or not extended out based upon the recent developments that have just come out of the state government, I'm not too sure. Um, so I mean, we could obviously advertise, but then it gets into the question as to. Uh, whether or not public participation is actually being honored, uh, for individuals such as Nancy who do not have access to a computer, so is that real true public participation? Or are we, you know, singling out individuals that are, are, would normally be able to access these types of meetings? So, um, it could probably be appealed, um.
I'm going with the second, second meeting in May, not May five.
Yes, we could definitely, uh, advertise, I think we'll run into the same problem, but as long as the board.
Can we have the public meeting at the property?
Only unless the, uh, board of selectmen, uh, lift the, um, declaration. Allowing public to enter the building.
Hey, we're, we're talking five weeks out roughly, right? So what's the second meeting date in May, what would that be?
Somewhere on the nineteenth, would that make it on the calendar?
Um, around the nineteenth to the twenty-sixth, twenty-sixth would be the.
It would be the nineteenth, but my concern is not only for the, the, the town, but also the applicant, because it costs money for them to advertise. And it costs money for them to send out the butter notification, et cetera, and then to open themselves up for an appeal. On a matter that obviously is not simple and straightforward and directs, and directly involves a, a, a private property owner. I, I just don't know what the proper course is, I'm just, I'm just bringing this information to light, how the board wants to proceed.
Okay, so, sure, I, I don't see that as a problem yet. But it, so, so in the motion to go with the major, the major change to hold a public hearing on May nineteen. If May nineteen comes along and we're still all, you know, quarantined, then we would just continue it. Um, the advertising would be done, we would open, you close, just like we did the two previous today.
Agreed.
And, and we would go with that, and that, uh, you know, that hopefully will be, you know, out of our igloos by then, but. Uh, but if not, we, we just continue it, it's not gonna be any more money, it's just gonna be the next meeting, and that's a. That's not because of any party, that's just because of the, the current virus that's affecting the world. So.
Agreed.